Here.
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 Here. All right, moving on to approval items. Do I have a motion to approve the April 28, 2025 regular board meeting minutes? So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Theis. Are there any questions to those minutes? All right, hearing none. Row call.
Katn?
Yes.
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Wobertsoni?
Yes. All right, next we have a resolution. Does that need to be read?
I will read the resolution.
Thank you.
Just for everyone to, you know, assembled here, this is actually National Teacher Appreciation Week. It's a national celebration. It does use teacher, which does, you know, speak to classroom teachers. We have a number of our new board members who are classroom teachers. It's specific, you know, to that, but also what we tend to do in our district is think of teacher as a general term that students use. You know, what I've found in my whole career is that, that the phrase teacher, and those of you who are in schools a lot, students use that phrase as a generic for any adult. So any adult is a teacher, no matter what they do, no matter what our description is in the district phone directory, whether we're a secretary, administrator, custodian, classroom teacher, students will always say, oh, that teacher down the hallway just, just spoke with me. And it's always been really interesting to me because I think it tells us something about the work that we do with students in that students see the adults as the teachers. And if you really think about it, all the adults engaged in whatever we're doing, whenever we're doing it, and the children are watching, they're learning. They're learning from us how to be adults in the world, or solve things, or solve challenges, or solve problems, or deal with difficult academic material. So it's really great. We have a whole set, you know, celebrations this week that are geared. I'd invite board members. I've been talking to Candace Garrettson. There's some fun things going on, some luncheons on Thursday, some, some ice creams, just some things, just to remind our whole staff how much we appreciate them. So we have a resolution that we, you know, would bring to this board to ask you to vote on and certify. So the resolution recognizing Lockport Township High School teaching staff. In May 2025, Teacher Appreciation Week is celebrated from May 5th to May 9th. On May 6th, within Teacher Appreciation Week, National Teacher Day specifically acknowledges the dedication and contribution of educators. This week offers a chance to thank teachers for their work, celebrate their dedication, and show appreciation for the valuable role they play in shaping the future of students. The Board of Education acknowledges that no student achievements are possible without skilled and dedicated teachers. Whereas Lockport Township High School teachers navigate daily the challenges of providing students the opportunity to learn, collaborate to ensure that our district is cohesive in its approach to student achievement, and respond to the daily needs of students, staff members, and parents. And whereas Lockport Township High School teachers embody on a daily basis an understanding that their success and accomplishments are part of a broader team effort in living out the slogans best self, best work, and together we succeed. Now, therefore, be it resolved on this fifth day of May 2025 by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, that our teachers are hereby recognized for their service, commitment, and contribution as part of National Teacher Appreciation Week. And I will, if you pass this, I will present this to our union president, Katie Kishline.
Yes, to all the teachers. All right, do I have a motion to approve the National Teacher Appreciation Week Resolution?
So move. Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Mr. Theis. Row call.
Please?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Katn?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
John? Shaw?
Yes.
Yes. And I, let's give another round of applause to our teachers.
Yeah, right on.
All right, moving on to our information report, review canvas of election results from the county clerk's office.
You can see board, you know, current board members can see those are attached, both for you and for the public. This doesn't require a vote. It really is just a requirement that it's reviewed, that you understand the results. We received this from the Will County Clerk. I can answer any questions if there are board questions about it. It's important for this current board to receive that canvassing result to kind of prepare the way for the board members who will, will swear in shortly. It certifies the following individuals: Anne Lopez Caneva, has been elected to a two-year term. Michaeline O'Halloran has been elected to a two-year term. Candace Garrettson has been elected to a four-year term. Tammy Hayes has been elected to a four-year term. Luanne Johnson has been elected to a four-year term. And Wendy Streit has been elected to a four-year term. I could answer any questions about this canvas if, if there are board member questions about it. All right.
Moving on. Before we move on to our agenda, I want to take a moment to, to thank first of all our board members that are leaving us. I'm really appreciative of all the work you did for us, and I will miss you guys, I really will. And I, I thank you on behalf of the board. Anyone else like to say a few words?
I'm really sad, but I just really appreciate all that I've learned from those of you who are leaving the board, even those who have been on for a very short period of time, just appreciated your, you know, efforts and willingness to help us out and all of the things that you contributed. Michael, I mean, your family's been on the board for such a long time, and just having you here, you're just, you know, a light when it comes to the board. And I'm, I'm really gonna miss having you around. And Lance, it's been really great getting to know you, you know, both on the board and then the friendship that we have now. And I just really appreciate your contributions, especially through all navigating everything that we have when it comes to Central, you know, having been through the process with your own school and just the, the different viewpoint that you bring to the board. So thank you for that.
All right, Michael, also just wanted to thank you personally, too. You know, I thank you for being a key part of the board and of our lives. So I took a little key of his from his retirement party and I just, so I'm worried. So yes, but thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Appreciate that.
I would just, oh, sorry. I would just like to say thank you to the board members that are leaving. Truly, this experience over the past school year has been so wonderful and the skills and the experience that I have gained is immeasurable. And so thank you for those, for just being mentors to me, being inspirations of the kind of adult that I would like to be and the behavior that I would like to operate in. So thank you so much. And just to, just reinstate that, like, thank you so much. I've learned from each and every one of you, and I just really appreciate you being a mentor in my life. And thank you.
And, and from the, you know, the superintendent's seat, one, you know, you're, you're the Board of Education that put the first student board members on this board's, you know, panel. I think that's a really important accomplishment that we always remember that we're here primarily for students. It's who we serve first. You know, I also think I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that it's been extraordinary times. This is really the board that, for the most part, steward us through COVID and that experience, which there hasn't been an experience in over 100 years in the United States like that. And we were inventing something, but one of the things I'm most proud of with this board is, is you had the courage to say that we were gonna bring our students back into school in August 2020. And you might recall, we were only, one of the only schools in northern Illinois that had students in person. And you gave me the tools the summer before that to, not that our children are, are experiments in a laboratory, but you might recall that you agreed to have summer athletic camps. And not only did that get kids back into socializing with each other, very important as we've later learned, but it gave us an opportunity to figure out how we can actually do school. So we, we opened our doors a little later than we thought, because the day before we were supposed to open, you might remember, the state of Illinois had a surprise for us. But we, we overcame that, too, right? And we're one of the longest running schools in terms of in-person in, in the pandemic. We, we were in-person and committed to it, you know, except for the moments when we just couldn't be, right? And then the second thing is, I think, for me as a superintendent, I would tell you, you know, the last year was, in my mind, in my work, more challenging than those COVID years. And you provided the architecture and the support to do what I think very few people could do, and that is in seven days, literally in seven days, move over 1,000 students, 100 staff members into a brand-new high school that they had never been in before, and mobilize bus drivers and everything that we needed to do to make sure that we did not have an interruption of service that was permanent. You might remember, we had, we had secondary plans of dividing our freshmen up into maybe three different sites. But when, you know, we were able to have a partnership with Lincolnway School District, you, you supported that, you quickly identified that as an opportunity, gave me the tools as a superintendent to work with my team and make that a reality for our freshmen. And then follow that up by all of us standing there, you know, on August 19th of this year with so much improved to Central, inviting all those students right back into a, a better building, a brighter building. And I'm just very proud that, that you did that and you empowered me to do it. So I thank really all of you for doing that, for particularly, you know, board members. You should be very proud of your service. And we'll do some, some other hoopla and thanks in, in a moment, but I just want to say thank you.
Just real quickly at the end, I'm being new. I appreciated you all embracing me and schooling me along and mentoring me along. And it's been a pleasure to get to know you, to get to work with you. And it couldn't have been a more positive experience on my behalf. And so, Avery and Mia, I wish you much luck in your future endeavors and hope you guys aren't strangers. Thank you.
All right, with that being said, I'm gonna miss being, having a Travis on the board. I got on the high school board with your dad and then with your mom and now with you. So, yeah, thank you. All right.
And, and typically, board members who are rolling off, we do have some hoopla, but maybe we'll suspend the hoopla. If there's anything, usually board members who are rolling off have a thing or two to say. And, you know, we probably just would open up, up the floor to the three of you if that, that's on your mind. Other, other than that, we've got some parting gifts for you and, and, and something we want to acknowledge in the history of our district that, that's pretty momentous. And I want to, beyond this research, if, if you can find it anywhere in the state of Illinois.
I'll, okay. I'll kick off since I'm the youngest on the board.
Very young.
Yeah, duration-wise, but I timed this, so hopefully it goes quick. As I reflect back on my brief term as board member, I first and foremost want to, I'd like to thank my fellow peers for accepting me to this assignment back in January. I am grateful for having a seat at the table during some very important board business these past few months. And I also want to acknowledge the generational commitment of Michael Travis and his entire family to the Porter community. It truly stands as an exemplary example of instilling community service into each other and our children. I also have had an inside seat into the work of Lance Teas. Few realize the hours he spends in between meetings, researching, meeting with staff, and engaging with community members to land at a spot that represents the collective best interests of those he serves. His statement last year on Central is of particular note as it educated many, including myself, on the complexities of managing that campus. I wish both Michael and Lance the very best and look forward to seeing them in the community. I have built, been a part of, and been invited to many team environments in my life spanning across athletics, the military, businesses, committees, and boards such as this. The book we all received called Coming to Order, just see sitting over there, spells out well the formula towards good governance. It requires a collective sense of purpose with D205 spelled out on the LTHS website and consistent engagement with the community. The board, as we all know, hires a superintendent, but then delegates authority to him or her to manage the district while, of course, holding him accountable. This delegation is crucial to a well-run board who works alongside the administration with both parties aligned by the shared purpose referenced above. Board members have unique opinions, must respect the opinions of others, and understand the importance of abiding by the majority decisions of the board. I share all this, as I can tell you, not just from my brief experience as a board member, but also as a member of the Facilities Master Planning Council. We are blessed with incredible transparency, high-functioning, and accessible administrative staff, and impactful teachers and support personnel. This did not happen by accident. Every good performance awarded or employed is the result of a greater web of efficiency that I've come to appreciate and value. I came to this conclusion through my own experiences and interactions and not through the opinions or social media posts of others. Don't get me wrong, when I see outside data, I'll listen to the opinions of stakeholders or witness situations that offer me pause. I ask questions. I seek a full picture. I am pleased to report you all have an administration that will provide it. With this foundation in place, I am convinced more than ever, the new board has the opportunity to continue to elevate the high school experience for our students. There are also many crucial decisions this board will make in the next four years, including that of superintendent in 2026. While thinking strategically about facility management has gotten much attention, bell schedules, curriculum offerings, AI leverage, extracurricular opportunities, union negotiations, staff retention, student safety, career readiness, all deserve your invested engagement. This can only be done by listening to your community, our teachers and staff, and our students. The real work of the board happens in between the meetings. It will take time, a willingness to learn, and a commitment towards consensus versus divisiveness. The metrics for success also cannot fall solely on the tax rate we pay. While the community has consistently made it clear they want the high school tax burden to remain one of the lowest in the area, as an LTHS parent for many years to come, I will not stand idle should the quality of our facilities, academic offerings, safety, or extracurricular options suffer. We all benefit from having excellent schools. We also will all suffer should standards slide. This board has the responsibility to ensure this does not happen. I want to congratulate those re-elected and those newly elected. The time investment, investment is not light if the role is done right. I did make a rhyme. Thank you for being a trustee of the community on behalf of all of us. We saw 20% turnout this election, which is great, but you rep, represent 100% of our community. Three townships, many demographics. I hope you take the time to value what that all entails. I look forward to being an active constituent throughout your term and wish you all the very best.
Well, he's kind of summed it up what it is to be a board member. But first of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for allowing me to sit beside you guys, not only learn, but do what we had to do, not only for just the community, but for the students. As Dr. McBride said, get them back in school back in 2020. Shuffle them around when the ceiling fell at Lockport Central. I just wanna, you know, thinking back, my dad, back in 75, when he sat down with the board for the first time, I believe I was in maybe junior high, just seeing him, you know, coming, preparing, coming to the board meeting, coming home. Back then, they was getting big packages of information. They didn't have this then. Just seeing that and seeing, you know, him contributing his time and his effort. And that was something he always did, even as he was a janitor at Fairmont. I always seen him looking out for kids. He took the time out, addressing the kids was less fortunate than us. Sometime he clothed them, he fed them. You know, just seeing that from my father, it kind of stuck with me. And I always had that in my heart that, you know, it's important to look out for one another. So I just want to thank, especially Dr. McBride, for doing what he had done in this district. I really believe that he took it to another level. He raised the bar. And I'm not gonna name names, but each and every one of you, I'm, I'm so happy to have time to spend with you guys. I'm gonna miss you, kind of bittersweet. So, thank you.
All right.
I would say that this has been one of my favorite years, an outstanding opportunity to get to know seven other outstanding volunteers, including Sandra and Zion, and our four wonderful student board members. You all dedicate hours and hours and hours to our school community as volunteers. I am constantly amazed at the incredible achievements of our students, the excellent mentorship of our teachers, and the forward-looking action of our administrative team. I look forward to continuing to see Porters succeed locally, regionally, and nationally. Advancements in our technology teams, our Lockport Academy, our CCC programs, our AP expansion, watching Compass reach its full potential, our facilities enhancing teaching and learning, staff excitement, scores continuing to rise, and our students constantly being challenged and succeeding. Thank you for the board welcoming me when I joined as an appointee, for the staff for supporting me anytime I asked for information or needed your advice, and for Dr. McBride for being a steadfast advocate for our students, our staff, and the board, and for being such a responsive leader in tackling tough issues and celebrating great moments. I wish the new board nothing but the best in guiding LTHS forward. We are remarkably blessed with a solid foundation of resources, of students, of people, and spaces to advance our community forward. And thank you again for the opportunity to serve the LTHS community.
Yeah, all right. And we just, you know, we have a little memento for each of these board members rolling off. You can open it up if you would like, you know, and take, take a look at it. You know, if we, if we were in Japan, it's highly, highly rude to open a present in public, but we are not in Japan. So don't worry about it. Don't worry about it, you know. But we just want to have something for you that wherever you put mementos and, and you put things that you want to remember, your accomplishments and milestones that you've had in your life, just something you can take with you for your home or your office that you can, you know, remember your time on, on the board. So congratulations. And that's really from our entire community, from the board, from our administrative team. And just, you know, if we could maybe give these three gentlemen one last round of applause for their service. There, there is a final acknowledgement that we just feel is very, very important. And if you look around, a number of years ago predating me, many people described this room as, as a nondescript room, you know, just very blank, people remember it. It was, it didn't have a lot of kick or appeal to it at all. And there was a vision to create the Porter Room. And what I think is really amazing about this room is you look at this mural, right? You just look at all the years, all the porters that have been served, the, you know, just some of the faces. I would really encourage anybody in the audience, when we have our final adjournment, just to walk up and see some of those, those faces staring out. For me, I always look at this young man down in the lower left-hand corner by the Coca-Cola machine. And I, I wonder where he is now, you know? If he's, if he's still alive, what happened to him? And then over by Dr. Green and, you know, where we chose to honor all of the porters who had gone before us in military service. We've got behind you our partnership with the Yamate GaiKun School. We also have really credit to the board's recording secretary, Kathy Maxwell, who did all of those, those cases behind you with Porter Memorabilia, stretching back to Ferris Bueller's Day Off, to the loyalty. And we were reflecting on really a, a signature accomplishment that we would like to add to the Porter Room that we just think is, is so worthy. So let me blow your mind for a moment. But in May of 1975, Charles Travis was sworn in, just like many of you will be sworn in. Probably the only difference was at that time, boards locally made up their own oath of office, and now the state has the longest oath of office you'll see in a minute ever. I mean, it's crazy. There has been an unbroken string of 50 years, from 1975 to this night, in 2025, where a Travis has been on the Lockport Township High School District 205 Board of Education. I don't know if that exists in Illinois. Charles Travis, you know, may his memory be a blessing. He's passed on. The incredible Della Travis, who at Michael and Rebecca's party the other night, you look like a queen. That's all I could say, you know, that's, it was amazing. You were regal, right? And then obviously Michael for the past six years. And it's so amazing to have so many members of the Travis family with us. So we want to show you what we plan to install here. But if we could do this, if I could have all the members of the Travis family, maybe just gather right over here, kind of by the American flag in that little space. And if I could present something to Mrs. Della Travis and Mr. Michael Travis. You know, if we could just meet over there and I want to just bring this over to you and properly present this to your family, where it will be hung right behind you, right up by those cases.
So on behalf of the Board of Education, we have loved the Travis legacy. So this acrylic, which very important was, it's actually made by our team in our entrepreneurship. We will post this acrylic right behind you by the permanent part of this room. That literally lists, thank you very much to the board recording secretary Kathy Maxwell. We went through every board book that we had, all that paper, to really certify all the years and all of the elections that a Travis stood for election and a Travis was voted by the members of Lockport Township High School District 205 community. 50 years, this community sent a Travis to the Board of Education. It says something really remarkable about your legacy, who you are as a people, a family, and what you've contributed to your community in a sense of service. And in my mind, most precious thing we have is public education. It's where democracy really lives. And so on behalf of the Board of Education, the entire community, our entire staff, our administrative team, just want to present this to Della and to Michael. And we give a big round of applause. Any speech of fire? Anybody have anything to say? You know, testify, anything we got to do, right? And, you know, I also want to acknowledge, I know the new board members are coming on, certainly, you know, I have a family at home. Everybody here has a family at home. We all know that we have a cast just like this, right? You know, Michael Travis has some of his children here. Michael remembers his father. Rebecca, what a great, you know, partner to Michael. But we all had somebody who we couldn't come and do this stuff and be away from our families if it wasn't for this supporting cast of daughters and sisters and aunts and mothers and sons who kind of let us come and we take time away from them. So I just want to acknowledge, you know, that we can't do it. We can't do it all. So any words of wisdom, anything you want? You should get the last word here before we adjourn.
I would like to thank Lockport for thinking enough of the Travis family to vote us in and keep us in. I had a great time when I was on this board and I enjoyed working with the board to help make things better for the students here to get what they need. And I was here when Dr. McBride was chosen to be the superintendent of Lockport High School. Very proud of him, very proud of him. First time I met him, I liked him. Energy. What you really need is energy. Because, you know, we want to keep things in Lockport getting better and better and better. And we're going to stay tops. We're not going to go down. We're going to go up higher. And I just want to thank Lockport and the board for doing this for us. And I wish Charles was here to see it, but he's not. So I'm accepting it in his honor.
Yeah, just recently.
And I forgot one other thing. Daddy, I forgot one other thing.
I will stay here if I'm supposed to. You can kick me out. Oh, you stay here.
My son, Chuckie Travis, who's on the basketball team that took us to state in 19...
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. Lockport was undefeated back then.
Softmoors and depression. And then we had 78 wins and that was the year, 78.
Yes, cool.
This was the first sophomore class that here in at the new school. So we just thank Lockport.
Well, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you to Michael Travis and all his family and to Della too. And Della, I was there too. Yes, as a matter of fact, Chuckie and I, we were classmates. We were classmates though. And it was at his retirement also, he was there too. And yes, it was a great moment. Of course, I was a portoret, which was the Palms at that time. So we were called portarets. I don't know when they changed the name, but that's what we were called. It was a great moment and there were great many memories because it really, even though for us as students, it really brought the community even a lot closer. They had parades for us. It was amazing. It really was at that point in time. A lot of memories. But thank you. Thank you to the Travis's. Alright, now moving on. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meetings? And I die.
So moved.
It's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Mr. The Throw Call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Garrison?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, at this time, we're going to have the oath of office for all board members.
Alright, so we will change this out if all the board, the elected, the six elected board members can meet where the Travis's were. And then as the sole, this usually by board policy goes to the board president or the longest-serving board member, or in this case, Dr. Shaw is the only board member who did not stand for election. So Dr. Shaw, you will administer the oath of office. And everybody take a deep breath because it lasts a long time.
We might get a basketball tax for that. Steve, you haven't met the mayor of Lockport Township High School. Call him the mayor of Lockport Township. No joke.
No, no, sorry.
And...
On the board. Yeah. Super fun. Everyone gets to participate in the O.
I'm going to hang on to it and keep it here, these two. They can go whenever they want to. Whenever you want to. You want me to call the room to order?
Alright, the board vice president and the elected board members, they look ready.
Yeah, we prepped, so we're going to say it all together.
You're the board vice president.
Alright ladies, are you ready? Alright, I Veronica Shaw do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the member of the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Lockport Township High School District 205. I shall assist in the establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's schools to advance that vision for Lockport Township High School District 205. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Alright.
So you all have seats. Come on and have a seat.
You know, and as new board members come to their seat, you have no identity in a high school unless you have some high school swag. So we want to make sure that you're outfitted. So just like we had an exit gift for our outgoing board members, we've got an entrance gift for our incoming board members. So enjoy. We're glad to have you. At this time, you know, just kind of walk the audience through and so people, you know, know how this goes. We don't take a roll call right now. We're not required to do that. You see a couple of things in front of you, your name plate, which we usually use in meetings so people can see, you know, who you are. Name badge, we try to wear that as much as we can. Occasionally, I'll forget it. But we try to do that to the people when we're milling around and we're out and about. People, you know, know who we are and I invite you to wear that for public events as well. At this point momentarily, I assume the role of board president pro tem. Meaning the only thing I do in this meeting is lead the nomination for board president. And maybe just to preview the agenda, what we'll do is we've seated you. I hope you like your seat. And I'll open up for the board president. Then the board president, once elected, whoever that is, will then seek a vice president, seek a secretary. We do the secretary pro tem, which we have to name tonight. Then a meeting is called to order by the president pro tem. That's the person. That's me. And then we'll do the president, the vice president, the secretary, and you can kind of follow along as we go down. Alright? I need a nomination for a secretary pro tem. And typically, pro tem, the secretary pro tem is Kathy Maxwell. So I do need a nomination if the board, you know, accepts, and pro tem always means temporary. Right? You will not be the board secretary for long, nor will I be the board president. Do I have a nomination for Kathy Maxwell?
So moved.
Alright, great. That does not need a roll call, you know, so it just needs a first and a second. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And at this point, if we could do the roll call, we'll just do a roll call of all members that are here, just to call everybody in officially.
Here.
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 Here. Here.
And we already called in Fontanetta and Caulella. At this point, we would take nominations for board president. Nomination does not need a second. Someone can be nominated. People, you can nominate somebody else. You can also nominate yourself. And so just again, nominations do not require a second. State school code states that the election of the board president, we do it by voice vote. And it is a four-three vote situation. You need at least four votes to be the board president. So I'll open it up now as president pro tem for, are there any nominations for board president for Lockport Township High School District 205?
I hear nominate Dr. Veronica Shaw as president of Lockport Township High School.
Veronica Shaw is nominated. Are there any other nominations? I'll call for nominations one last time before we close it. We'll take a voice vote. There's a nomination that Veronica Shaw be the next president of the Lockport Township High School District 205 Board of Education. That is a two-year term. Members can vote yes on that motion, no on that motion, or abstain. Could you do the roll call?
Yes.
Garrison?
Yes.
Oh, Harold?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
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 So we have to pause for a minute because now, Dr. Shaw, you have to change places with Mrs. Lopez Caniva. And as you do that, I would personally, you know, I've been with Ann Lopez Caniva as board president my entire tenure. And I think it's worthwhile. She was vice president, the president of the board in 2018, had to move due to a job. And that falls right on the vice president. And she took up that mantle and immediately started taking up some extraordinary challenges. Hiring a superintendent, not an easy process. Very next year after that, COVID. Very next year after that, COVID, very next, and it's been just such a pleasure serving with you, and your grace, and your diplomacy, and your class, and I will never forget what you said at a graduation. Love them anyway. Um, I think you've led with faith, um, and I think it's also worthwhile that Anne Lopez-Caneva was the 2020 Thomas Lee Burrows Award winner in the State of Illinois, uh, which is for the top Board President of over 800 boards in this state. So if we could just give her a big round of applause for her six years of service, I'd appreciate it. Dr. Shaw, it's your meeting.
Right, well, thank you, Anne. Um, so now I will take nominations, uh, for Vice President. I would like to nominate Anne Lopez-Caneva.
I nominate Candace Garrettson.
Okay, any other nominations? Dr. McBride, I believe this is the first time we've ever had two people nominated for a position, can you give us?
Right, so what you will do is you will signify, rather than a yes or no, each Board Member will signify who you're voting for. You have two nominations, Anne Lopez-Caneva or Candace Garrettson, and simply Board Members will vote by saying, you know, the name of the candidate that they're voting for. So when Kathy Maxwell does the roll call, you'll just, you know, here's who you're voting for. And again, we have six members here, uh, which does present an interesting situation. And we have to continue to vote, or you have to continue to talk, um, until you have a majority of that six, right?
Candace Garrettson.
Anne Lopez-Caneva.
Anne Lopez-Caneva.
Anne Lopez-Caneva. Anne Lopez-Caneva.
Congratulations, Anne Lopez-Caneva is elected Vice President, congratulations.
I will now take nominations for the election of Secretary.
I hereby nominate Candace Garrettson as our Secretary.
Any further nominations? Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Okay, now we are going to appoint the Board Recording Secretary, and typically that goes to Kathleen Maxwell. Do we have?
Yes, you can comment, yes, no, uh, or abstain, you know.
So do we take, just take roll then?
You would have to move in second, and then take roll.
Okay, do I have a motion to appoint the Board Recording Secretary?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. You guys all said it at the same time?
I think Candace.
Roll call. Yes. 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 Okay, we now need to appoint a Board Treasurer. And typically that would go to Stephanie Croy, who's sitting over there. Dr. McBride, would you mind explaining why the Treasurer goes?
Right, typically, um, and you might have followed this, this is an issue in especially Southern Cook County, where the, the, the Treasurer oftentimes was at the Township Office. That is, that was required in Cook County, not required in, in, in other counties. Typically, the Treasurer is bonded and is the Chief School Business Official because of the close relationship between the financial stewardship that the CSBO does and then the role of Treasurer. If you think about it, um, one simplistic, very simplistic way of thinking about it is the CSBO is handling the daily financial operations, but the Treasurer is handling oftentimes cash flow, taxes, and investments, right? There's a close relationship of the two, so very typically in Will County, DuPage County, um, Lake County, it is the same person, the CSBO.
Okay, so do I have a motion to appoint Stephanie Croy as the Board Treasurer?
I'll make that motion. I can second that.
Roll call. Yes. 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 So up next on our agenda, we have item 11, which is establishing the, um, regularly scheduled board meetings.
And this, this is really up to the Board. Um, this Board is selected to meet on the third Monday of every month at 7:00 PM. Uh, you've elected to meet once a month. You might have a retreat or a workshop where there's one board meeting a month, and there are two committees that usually meet at about a cadence of once a month as well, dividing the Board. So in some ways, if you could think about it as Board Members, this Board is elected to have almost two meetings a month, the meeting of the entire Board, like we are assembled right now, then the meeting of, of committees. Put this in front of you, we ask you to, to vote on it. All you're approving is, are these calendar dates, it's not unusual that we might have a situation where we have to change a date. For example, we typically on a Monday that is a holiday and the district is closed, uh, we do not have a board meeting that, that evening. So we, uh, had to reset in January, rather than meeting on April 21st, which is a holiday, uh, the day after Easter in the district typically, and in the next two calendars, we just had to move it to April 28th. We always try to do that with enough notice for the public to know that the Board has moved, um, that date. So usually there's a, a first and a second, and we can answer any questions about any of the dates. We have all of your dates for the remaining 2025, and then into the 2025, 2026 school year.
Do I have a motion to establish the regular meeting dates for the Board of Education?
I'll motion.
I'll second. Any questions about the dates?
A typical question I get from all Board Members is if you, you, sometimes life interrupts, and you might, you might have plans, you might miss a, a board meeting. Typically, under Illinois State School Code, if you are missing because of illness, childcare, or work travel, you may join remotely, either by phone or by something like Google Meet. If you are taking personal time or vacation time, you may not join the meeting, and that's, that's State School Code. I also think that's good practice, if you're on vacation, be on vacation, right? You should do that for yourself. Typically, what we do on the Board is if a Board Member, uh, isn't able to, and sometimes that's a surprise, able to attend a meeting, you know, we do a lot of preparation going into the meeting, and then typically the Board President and myself reach out to the Board Member and kind of bring the Board Member up to speed with any kind of issues that we have to talk about, um, you know, with that. Sometimes I'm asked by Board Members if they see agenda items and they're not there, can they vote in advance? Uh, you cannot render a vote in advance. Our votes have to occur in public under the public eye, and that's what, what it's all about with the Open Meetings Act, so you cannot kind of render a vote in advance.
Any other questions? Roll call. Yes. 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 So up next is a discussion item to appoint members of the Board who didn't make. So we have two sitting committees that we typically, um, will send two members to for each. Uh, we have our Curriculum Committee, which meets with Dr. Christophero. I don't know if she wants to say anything about her committee.
We meet and we discuss curricular instructional items. We just talked about the academic return on investment, which impacts our PLCs. We've talked about what is the book approval process. We've talked about AP courses and how we work to get students in there and help teachers be prepared. Those were like the last three topics of the meeting.
And then we have our Facilities and Finance Committee, and Dr. McBride, I don't know if you wanna?
Yeah, and Mrs. Croy, do you wanna make mention of what Facility and Finance typically does?
I sit on the Curriculum Committee, so I don't know what happens at Facilities and Finance.
No, absolutely, I mean, it's, it's similar, right? Um, the, the primary things we talk about are, we dig deeper into some of the finances, right? So we dig deeper into the budget, how the tax levy process, the budget process. You know, sometimes we'll dig into facility things, right, with the central, um, you know, ceiling last year, and with the bonds and the construction and, um, facility master planning, we talk about some of those things, and we dig deeper into those than what we can do in the board meeting. Oftentimes, it's like a preview, so for things like the tax levy or the budget, you're getting the preview of the amendment, um, and, and asking questions, and, and that may trigger something that actually gets presented differently to the Board, right? Like clarification, things like that, so, um, yeah.
And, and for Board Members, if you could think about it this way, our board meeting last week on April 28th, the regular April meeting, there was a lot of reference, you know, um. The academic return on investment report, a number of Board Members on the Curriculum Committee prefaced their remarks by saying, "Well, when we were in committee, we discussed this." So, you know, that was a very thick document, you know, almost 80 pages. In the committee, they really took that apart in a way that there isn't exactly time in a once-a-month board meeting when you're looking at a lot of different aspects of Board Governance. So you'll hear that reference. It's really a responsibility, if you're on the Curriculum, uh, Committee, to report out to your fellow Board Members who are not, to give them assurance that you've gone deep on a very, very particular issue. Similarly, you know, as Stephanie said, with finance and facilities, it's just a time really to get more nitty-gritty. For example, uh, we knew we had to amend our budget, a very typical thing. We have to, we're required by the state to approve a budget in September and submit that. But we knew that there would be things this year, actions that we would take that would require us to amend it. Uh, the Board did a debt service abatement. Obviously, in September, when we put in the, uh, budget, we voted on the debt service abatement in December, so we can't include that in the budget. Also, we just did a bond sale last Monday, that new influx of funds, that amends the budget. So the, uh, Finance and Facility Committee of the Board Meeting is where those Members really dug deep into, um, what is this tentative budget? What does this mean? Um, why do we have a tentative amended budget? We present it, and then we wait another month to, to, to vote on it. It's for you to have it in front of you and for the public. The bond sale, or more intricate things like that, you know, again, it's responsibility of the people on that Committee to vet that for their fellow Board Members and really to answer questions or to raise issues or ask for clarifications or a better way to display it to the public, for example. All those things, uh, come up.
And we also have two other opportunities for Board Members. We have a delegate, um, for IASB, and that person typically represents the Board at III and votes on any resolutions that, um, would be, that, that represents us and votes on those resolutions based off of how we vote as a Board, um, and also reports back. Do they have virtual meetings, correct? They're not in person?
Yeah, they do, sometimes the IASB delegate, they have, during the year, they have virtual meetings, but on the Saturday of the State Conference, there is this sort of very interesting large gathering of all the delegates, and there, there is a legitimate list of resolutions. We usually prepare as a Board to arm our delegate, the current delegate is Luanne Johnson, with, with how this Board would like Luanne to vote. Actually, this year, um, one of the things that Luanne did was she pulled an issue for further discussion, which delegates can do. There was just an issue we want to know a little bit more about before we said yes or we cast a, a no vote, and delegates, uh, can, can do that. Going back to the Committees, usually it's a very organic process, these do not require a roll call vote. You really just have a discussion and decide, um, you know, where you want to fall. We typically have of seven, we have one Committee of Four, one Committee of Three. You kind of decide based on your interests. The previous Board also had two students that they appointed. We, we do have a slate of students that you'll interview, um, coming up, and to make space for them, we've had one student on the Curriculum Committee and one student on, uh, Facility and Finance, um, just throwing that in there for you.
So does anybody have interest in a particular Committee or area?
Yes, Board members, I would still like to remain on the Finance and Facilities. Facilities and Finance.
I also would like to be on the Facilities and Finance.
Okay, and Michaeline, I know you mentioned that you were interested in Curriculum.
I'd like to be on the Curriculum Committee, yes, thank you.
Um, I've already sat on the Curriculum, so I'd like to have the opportunity to sit on the Finance.
I'd like to be on the Curriculum Committee.
All right, then I plan to remain on the Curriculum, but I can go either way, okay?
Probably, you know, you have a kind of exact balance, Dr. Shaw, if, if you're on it. And then, um, we'd have to find out from Ms. Johnson, which she's been on the Curriculum Committee typically. Um, she might want, want to stay on that. And I should have asked you the most important thing, typically these Committees meet, um, on Monday nights at sort of a time, you know, that's set, 5 o'clock, 5:30, that's set by the Members. But each of you works with, uh, each Committee Member works with Stephanie Croy or Lori Christophero to set your time and place and space. Those meetings are also governed by the Open Meetings Act, so do you have to have an agenda that's published at least 48 hours in advance? Has to be a public meeting, public participation, all those kind of things as well, so.
And then as far as IASB, is that something you'd like me to speak with Ms. Johnson about? And if, see if she'd like to continue that?
It's really up, up to all of you, you know, how you wanna, you know, you know, decide or, or move forward, or... There's not really any action, you could, I, you could speak to, uh, Ms. Johnson if she'd like to take on that role. You could have somebody here who's interested. There's nothing right this moment on the agenda for that person. It's really up to you, Dr. Shaw.
Okay, I'll have a conversation with her and see where she's at with that.
I have a quick question, is it, is it for one year or is it for the term of your office?
Um, typically, we appoint the person when we reseat the Board.
Right, it's usually two years.
Okay, so in two years.
Right, but, but there's actually, there's no governance on that, Ms. Hayes. You could say we're gonna have, have it, you know, one year, and then we're gonna, we're gonna change it, you know, after Delegate Assembly in November, right? So it's, it's really completely up to you, there are your appointments as a Board, so how you wanna handle it is...
Do you want me to reach out after I speak with Luanne?
Yeah. But I, I believe there is an alternate, alternate, isn't there?
Well, you do have to have an alternate. Um, and the reason why we have an alternate is that in case, let's say, someone's sick, you have to be present, it's a little bit present to win, present to vote, in November. So you do need an alternate, you know, you might wanna open that up, Dr. Shaw.
I'll reach out.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Um, and then the, the last thing I saw on the agenda was a Foundation representative. So, um, would you like to speak a little bit about the Foundation and its mission?
The Foundation, um, has existed for, uh, in the 26th year. The Board of 15 community members, they are all here. And typically, a Board Member comes and attends the meeting, um, to lend your voice and thoughts, and then also just kind of hear what, um, some of our community members are saying about, you know, the school and, and what we're doing. It's, these are, the 15 people are your probably most dedicated fundraisers and invested, uh, community members, so it, you know, it's a great, it's a great way to get to know them, and we do a lot of fun things, and we give away a lot of money in just about two weeks.
How often do you meet?
We meet once a week, uh, once, once a month.
Very up tempo.
Wow, yeah, we're very excited, so once a month, uh, it's usually, uh, the, the first Tuesday of the month. We sort of follow, uh, a weird rule, is it the Monday before that is a holiday, then we move next to one. So people are out of town, like, for example, you know, I don't know, what day? Yeah, Easter or something like that, with fall, we try and move it, but, uh, like tomorrow is the meeting. Not that you have to come tomorrow, but that one year. And I run a one-hour meeting.
That was my next question.
That was my next question.
It's, these are 15 volunteers that do not wish to spend more than an hour with me a month.
But Angela's lovely.
As fun as I am, we try, yeah, we do a couple of emails, um, and...
And I, and I can say, being, I was the liaison before, you know, but yes, it's very, yes, she runs a really tight ship right to the agenda, it's like one hour, and it's done perfectly, but, uh, but yeah. And I think that, uh, the Foundation Board Members are very, um, gracious, they're very, like I said, volunteers also. But yes, we also try to get as many Board Members, you know, from the school to get involved in their fundraising events too, so, but, uh, but yeah. involved in their fundraising events too, so, but, yeah. So.
Okay, is there any interest in the foundation? Or we can talk later? We'll talk later, okay.
And if nobody expresses interest, it just sort of stays open. The superintendent, and by the bylaws, the superintendent and board member on it, but we are not voting members on that board. So it's nice to have that connection, right?
And if needed, so say, you know, everyone has busy lives, could we rotate the board member that comes?
You certainly could do that too, if you decide, and again, this is not a role that, oh, you've got to decide tonight, we have a foundation board meeting tomorrow night, that's probably not on anybody's calendar, but it's just kind of getting that connection. I will tell you, I think the foundation board appreciates, you know, seeing board members, seeing me, that plug-in. Oftentimes, questions come up, it's nice to turn and kind of get the perspective, so it really helps. Can I, Dr. Shaw, throw just two other things out for consideration? Another one which is coming up is just thinking about your structure with, there are superintendent committees, and there are board committees. So, for example, curriculum and Finance and Facilities, those are board committees. But all the time I'm running committees, Mr. Dostoff always likes to run research groups. You know, we sort of tease about that. We have a, right now, we have a daily bell schedule, research group, we have, you know, an assessment group that's meeting, a variety of different committees I'll pull together, but another committee that I pulled together that's over a year old is the Facility Master Planning Council, and we've had board members on that. That's a superintendent committee, it's not a, per se, a board committee, and we have generally, we've had two board members on it, because if we have three board members on a superintendent committee, then it falls under the Open Meetings Act, which is no big deal. It just means we have to publish an agenda, make sure people know, and it's a public meeting, right? The past board selected only to have two board members on it. Anne Lopez Caneva is currently on it, I don't know if you're planning on continuing on it. Candace Garrettson has been on it, I don't know if you're interested in continuing on it, you know, I don't know where that leaves everybody else, but we could use two members, and it's just a great way to be in that meeting and doing some listening. So I, you know, I could use some direction on who to invite for next. We meet one week from tonight.
I'm still interested.
Yeah, I have been attending the meetings for a few months now, and I would like to be on it too. I can step aside. I'll be fine. Okay, okay. Thank you. One less meeting for me.
And you go to a few meetings, and if everybody's comfortable with that, Tammy, if you're going to be on Master Planning Council and Candace, and you could always reserve, all right, you can change your mind later, you can say, you know what we're going to do, we're going to have three, four, five board members on that, we'll just have to use Open Meetings Act and publish the meeting, right? So it stays open too, it's not a closed.
Yeah, and my understanding too is that if, you know, if you, Ms. Hayes or Ms. Candace Garrettson, they can't, if you can't attend that meeting, just let us know, and then someone else will.
Okay, perfect. Absolutely. I can jump in on that.
Yeah, that was going to be my question if we can.
Yeah, we can always do that.
The final thing, wow, this seems like a long list of things that you have to do. But I've spoken with many of you, and especially Anne when she was president, and Dr. Shaw when she was vice president. Just found an idea I'd like you to consider, and you don't have to, you know, finalize it tonight, it's one of those really more, you know, start of next school year feels opportune. But we have seven feeder districts, and we have seven board members, and, you know, my job is to advise the board, and one of the things I would really strongly advise you is to develop a liaison system where each of you adopts a district, and you stay in contact with the board president, the board members of that district, you learn about that district, you find out more about it. Opportunities come our way that sometimes, for example, there's a community gathering at the Fairmont Community Center, and it's very nice that we as administrators get invited, but I think it's really important that we have elected officials. It would be great to have a liaison who goes to that and understands a little bit more about what's going on in Fairmont. I also think for each board member, it would really help give a full idea of the totality of the district, right? Certainly, you don't have to decide that tonight, but it's just something I would really suggest for you as board members. You'll hear at the end of the night, one organizing principal will roll down a bunch of different great events that are going to be coming up over the next couple of weeks. We've never really had an official sort of, hey, everybody's going to take a kind of a nighttime event, but I also would really recommend that to you as well. It's not the tempo that we have of, you know, attending three or four nights a week, but going to one district event once a month, it just helps you so much. People want to see you, they want to connect with you, it really helps you understand kind of the full scope of the district, so just another suggestion for the whole board to consider.
So I think that that's also a great segue into kind of just the discussion about, you know, a potential retreat?
Sure, yeah.
Is that something we can discuss there?
Absolutely. Yeah, you take it away.
Candace, did you have something to say before?
I did. I just wanted to kind of stress my opinion on Dr. McBride's suggestion that we kind of, as a board, collectively decide what events we're going to go to. I think it's just really important, we were elected by our citizens, we should actually participate and show up for our students when they're doing their activities. Personally, that's something that I've enjoyed, and I've tried to do a lot since I've been on the board, it's been a really big learning experience, you know, I, you know, everyone comes into the school at their particular point, and it's nice to expand, well, I found it's nice to expand my horizons and get to know other aspects of the campus and the students' activities beyond what my kids were interested in. So I really, really think it's a kind of an important thing, so if that's something that the president would be interested in, I'd be happy to help organize that if maybe.
Okay. So I guess, moving on to our board retreat, that's definitely something I would want to bring up when we have that. Just some topics that we've gone over before at our board retreats, we've talked about board governance, we all did a book study, Coming to Order. I know that you, we're all provided that book. We all kind of took a chapter, talked about it. We've also had some wonderful facilitators come in and talk to us just about the things that we want to talk about, whether it's, you know, governance, or whether it is just how, our norms and protocols, if it's about just how we speak as one voice, just kind of how we operate as a board. So I'm just interested in knowing kind of what you all think, and things that you would want to go over at a board retreat.
I think, I think it would, I would find it helpful to go over of how we're all seven individuals, but collectively, we're one board, and I think it would be helpful for me if we had additional work on that. Sometimes that's, I find it sometimes hard to remember that, you know, we're all in it together, so I think that'd be helpful.
I guess if I was going to think about it, I would say something along the lines of, I don't want to say conflict, but, you know, when, some, people don't agree all the time. Nobody agrees 100% all the time, so maybe like, something along the lines of like a conflict, come-together resolution, something that makes it easier or helps us present our information to someone who maybe is not agreeing with us, or that we can help understand someone else's point of view when we're trying to discuss stuff and get to an answer.
I like the idea of the book study that you brought up, Dr. Shaw. I know that we had discussed that previously, and I think there's a lot of topics within the Come to Order book, I started reading it, that really lay the groundwork for deeper conversations, and I think that it'd be beneficial for us to be able to all conversate on that together.
And typically, just for the new board members, you know, what the board president usually directs me is to get a, sort of a facilitator for you. And just to give you kind of a flavor of who's out there, like, what I've just heard, collective decision-making, handling disagreement, you know, I always say a 4-3 vote, or a 5-2 vote, or however, you know, having that difference of opinions, good for democracy. A book study of Coming to Order, those generally point to the Illinois Association of School Boards, which has a sort of a framework that it leads new boards through. That's one group. We've used a variety of different other facilitators, we used a public relations specialist for one retreat, who really talked to the board about, you know, how do you take conversation and create, you know, a singular issue that includes different points of view, but this is what the board voted on, and, you know, all of those, those kind of things. There are certainly people who are experts in teamwork, you know, you can just straight out do teamwork. There are retired superintendents who have dealt with highly functional boards and highly dysfunctional boards, right, could probably, if they're, you know, into that. So, you know, I'll work with Dr. Shaw to try to cultivate who would be a good facilitator for you. One decision that you have to make is, do you want to hold your conversations in closed session or open session? And if you want to hold your conversations in closed session, you do have to work with Illinois Association of School Boards. Sometimes school boards do that to have a higher level of candor with each other, but you can only do that if your facilitator is the Illinois Association of School Boards. So we'll be working on that, and obviously taking your feedback.
And if there's something that, you know, didn't come to mind here right now, just give me a call, and we can talk with Dr. McBride. All right, announcements.
All right, announcements to Mrs. Garrettson's point. So typically, when we do the announcements, we do evening announcements, and we try to do them in a cycle that kind of matches the rhythm of whatever you're meeting. You can see May is a exciting month. There is one on there that I want to mention that you're all invited to. April 29th, last week, I just want to show you the musical matinee, I just put that up there because that's something we do for the community. We bring in a lot of our feeder districts, and it was Adam's Family, very funny, it was great. This coming week is really exciting. As a gardener myself, I can verify that these are good, solid plants. May 7th, you get included in this, but the Horticulture Plant Sale first opens up on Wednesday to students and staff, so you come under that umbrella. May 8th and 9th, it's open to the general public, those are the hours, and May 10th, a little bit more limited hours on Saturday. You can see, we already had the Spring Musical, just wanted to highlight that. Wednesday evening, really nice thing, art show, it's in the port here at East Campus, it's a great pass-through, it's one of those really nice events for board members, you're just breezing on through, good to see. Thursday night, Spring Band Concert, it won't disappoint, you'll probably see the Wind Symphony perform at your next board meeting, because we're going to honor them for a state-level accomplishment they achieved. Senior Dinner Dance is May 10th. May 14th, one, not this Wednesday, but Wednesday next, great event that really our foundation and our guidance department run, it's the Class of 2025 Annual Scholarship Ceremony. Thank goodness that it's long, because we are giving out a lot of scholarships to seniors. On May 17th, this is just fun, I wish I could go, I'm sad to miss it, my daughter will be graduating from Creighton University on May 17, but the big show, which is a great vocal performance, brings all the different vocal performances together. May 23rd, Senior Sunset, goodbye seniors on that Friday, so sad. And then all of you board members, we will be typically at a switch like this, obviously all of you, it's typically an expectation that the current board attends graduation. We also, board members who roll off, like Mr. Travis, Mr. Tease, and Mr. Patton, invite as well who were with this class, so that is May 31st, Class of 2025, dual setup, outside and inside, 4:00 p.m., right, Dr. Johnson? You get here at 3:00, so. Any questions about those events? One other thing, May 29th, Dr. Green, and what time? 12:45?
12:45.
So 12:45, we gather in the East Campus Cafeteria to have one last lunch together, and then 2:00, we have a celebration. No, it is not boring, Dr. McBride making a speech, it's actually really cool. It's where we give out all of our awards. We give out the Mildred Jackson Award, which goes to a, you know, someone who's voted by students for their work in the school. It comes with a $5,000 monetary award. Yeah, the foundation runs this, and we also do the Golden Key, which is for a bus driver. We had 183 bus driver nominations, you know, for the Golden Key, so good luck to that committee deciding who gets the Golden Key. What am I missing, Mrs. Adolf?
Retirees.
Yeah, and it's just a nice, it's, we acknowledge our retirees, you'll also do that on May 19th at your board meeting. We acknowledge, I think, Dr. Green, people who have accomplished perfect attendance this year, we acknowledge people who have earned degrees, it's just, it's really just a celebration of the good stuff that's happened this year. May 29th, 12:45 if you want the lunch, 2:00 if you want the ceremony in the auditorium. You'll get plenty of information about it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.